Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Not info. If there is a meeting but you cannot go. Goshen, New York. Not info. London, Paris, Tokyo, Hong Kong. No matter where in the world you can turn it on. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Not info. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Not info. If there is a meeting but you cannot go. Goshen, New York. Not info. London, Paris, Tokyo, Hong Kong. No matter where in the world you can turn it on. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Not info. London, Paris, Tokyo, Hong Kong. No matter where in the world you can turn it on. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Goshen, New York. Not info.
Okay. Maybe I have some. Maybe they could. Hello again.
Talking to a third estate.
You and me.
Oh, that's a threat.
We all right. Thank you so much. I have some amendments to the agenda. Under new business, we were, we have been working behind scenes on many of the tax surcharges. Items two through seven. And we're going to postpone that. We're still trying to finalize some of those. Two through seven. Are there any other amendments to the agenda this evening?
No, but I'd like to welcome back George Lyons. Good seeing you. I'm feeling better, George, than Mr. Infusion. But he's always worked with you. Yeah, it's good to be back.
That's great.
I handed it to him.
Yep. Okay.
It's where the other file was. I'll copy the other file.
Now, we'll go over the privilege of the floor in regard to the items in the agenda.
So, first of all, can I discuss item two?
Sure. Which one? Item under old business or new business?
Under old.
Yeah.
Did we lose that lawsuit or is this a separate bill?
Oh, no, this is the 2010 bill.
Oh, okay.
The, we're not having a lawsuit. We're actually having arbitration.
Right.
And that's for years 2008 and '09.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Phil will start with you.
No. Hold on. I had a question. So, okay. I had a letter from our chief of police to the Mrs. Murphy in the town of Arcadia Hills. One of our officers were on the scene. He went up, walked, talking to me.
Oh.
Yeah.
Why don't I start with Lou? You know, mine.
Okay, Louie.
Get this together. Who you're up? Sorry, got a little.
A little thing like a microphone when you go up there.
Don't say Louie for the Phil.
Did he shoot that?
He took something out.
I can't do the microphone.
I just have a few things. As far as the senior center is concerned, we got a meeting today. Just want to make a few announcements. The St. Patrick's lunch will be Tuesday, March 15th at 12:30. Also, another announcement. The senior club will be celebrating their 40th anniversary this coming June. So, on June 8th at 12:30 to 4 o'clock at Otterville Country Club, they will be having an affair there. And I'm sure that Ellen will put that in the paper, but I just, I don't know all the particulars. I don't want to say how much it's going to cost because I might be wrong. As far as the highway department, everything's going swell there. I'm not going to talk about what I talked about the last time, salt and the roads. But he did want me to announce, Michelle and Robert Knoll, that there'll be letters going out this week to inform the people that have always participated in adopt the road program. And I just, and this will be the 10th year that we're doing it. And if any citizens or organizations that would like to participate to help keep the side of the roads of the community clean, they can contact the highway department at 294-6033 and ask for Michelle. And we do provide the orange, big garbage bags for people that participate. We do. And it's nice to say, and I don't have the names, but there are six people that are still involved since the first year that we did this. So, when I talked to Robert, Michelle already went home, I would like to thank those organizations or persons for doing it for 10 years. Okay? That's about it. Thank you.
Kenny?
Water and sewer is, oh, I get the sound. Water and sewer is quiet right now. Water and sewer, but I want to thank Doug. He's been putting together all of the numbers for the last two or three years in Hamiltonian Arcadia. The town boys, what, what, what went down? How we're improving our I and I. Doug, it's a pleasure working with you. He's working hard and trying to save as much money and fix that I and I problem. So, thank you, Doug.
You were quite well. My pleasure. George.
George Rick. Report is as follows. The Azuma classes have been a big success, and there's another one that's going on now. Eight sessions Tuesday night from 6:00 to 7:00 at the CJ Hooker Building. The cost to Goshen residents is 35 and non-Goshen residents is 40. There's also registration that's currently open for Drama Kids program held on Tuesday nights from March 1st through May 24th at the Goshen Senior Center. The registration for the above programs can be completed online at www.goshenrecreation.org.
JRC hosted the movie night program again this winter. They had one movie in January, one in February, and the last one is going to be in March. It's going to be on the 4th, 3/4th at 7:00 PM with the Goshen Senior Center. Moviegoers are encouraged to dress in their favorite Star Wars attire because that's the movie, Star Wars. Admission and popcorn, popcorn are free. The tentative date for the spring egg hunt is Saturday, 4/16. The rain date, Sunday, 4/17, to be held at Crayville Park. JRC is in the process of securing space for the Goshen Central School District for the recreational summer day camp. Restroom project exhumation continues to move forward with anticipation of meeting the current project completion date of June 1st. Goshen Soccer Club will hold a soccer camp for travel players at Crayville Park during the spring break, which is 4/18/2011, field conditions permitting. And last, Goshen Lily looks forward to the season opening in Crayville Park on Monday, 4/25/2011. That's it.
Good. Thank you, George. And Phil?
I have very little to report, and that's a good thing when it comes to police, if it's very quiet. However, you always hear the problems, but you don't hear some of the good things that were done. I will just reflect on a letter that was received from the Mrs. Murphy regarding Officer Imperio. She had a problem with her car, go there, and she just followed it up until the whole problem was resolved. And she wrote a very, very nice letter. I won't go through the letter. I can give it to the press if she would like, but it was a very nice letter just commending the efforts of our police department. Secondly, I was asked, the last time we had a situation, it was a fire and one of our offices was injured. He had a hand injury. There was a fire in Arcadia Hills. And although there was a comp claim only for the injury, our officer did not go out on compensation, but with no compensation paid other than having to report to the compensation department. So, I had a two-hour meeting with our police chief yesterday. Actually, it was longer than two hours. However, it was dealing with personnel, and I will go over the specifics of all of those in our executive session, unfortunately, a personnel matter. So, that will be it for this one.
Good. Thank you.
One thing for Phil.
Yes.
I guess the last snowstorm, we kind of forget sometimes about our police department and all our emergency, people doing these recent snowstorms. I guess. I watch one of our patrol cars, they're chilling now, Arcadia Road, they're on Two Way Hill Drive. They take a lot of risk when they're out there on those patrol cars. We have one four-wheel drive, but our police department, fire departments, ambulances, we kind of forget those people. We're very fortunate to have those people in the, in the.
Excellent. Kenny, you're absolutely right. We all give it credit sometimes, so.
Okay. Thank you very much for those comments. First, I'd like, I just kind of like to acknowledge, I read the paper about the death of Bob and Doris Wayne, her son. And here the fellow municipal leader, and I find it very sad, similar to me, and I thought some prayers and all this. So, best for him and his wife. One of the things that we've been working on very diligently over the last few weeks is cost reduction activity. And on Monday, our budget officer came before the board, talked about the things that we're doing. It's going to be, I think, more imperative that we do more of this when I look at the what's going on regarding the cost of oil, because it's going to translate into asphalt and fuel and other things. And we can't wait until late in the year to tighten up. We've got to do as we go. And I think we are, but I would encourage the board and all the leadership in the town to continue on that. We spent a lot of time on tax surcharges. Mr. Cantorino, who is the commissioner of finance, myself, and Dennis, who's the attorney for the town. We've spent two marathon sessions, each one of them in excess of four hours, so eight hours I'm just good. And you can see a lot of them are listed tonight. They're not finalized, so we'll just keep working on them until we get them finalized. An tax surcharge is a hidden liability. That's where someone can test their assessment. And these can go on for years, and some of these go on for years. And we're very much concerned about them, but we're working diligently on them. Tomorrow, we're going to get a follow-up inspection by the Department of Labor, the personnel and safety and organization. We've been doing a lot of work on our security system, procedures, our safety systems. And Robert Knoll, we've got some programs that we've written, done a lot of things. And we sent that to the State Department of Labor, and tomorrow they're coming as a follow-up audit to ensure that we've done the things that we said we did. So, I'm optimistic we'll do just fine. And the last item is, we always talk about a lot of, a lot about lack of cooperation between the village and the town. I did get a request from the commissioner of sewer in the village, need some information, and we provided all that information. Hopefully, it will help them out. It's regarding our I and I, inflow and infiltration. And we had done two studies through years, recent years, and hopefully this will help them in their endeavors. So, we'd like to continue doing that. Okay. Under old business, would someone like to make a motion, first of all, on Monday, the budget officer talked about the transfers, year-end transfers, and we have a resolution that makes this official. And so, would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution to authorize the budget officer to make the year-end transfers?
No more.
Madam clerk, or any discussion? Madam clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman Lurie.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. The next one is a resolution to authorize the budget officer of the town of Goshen to pay the annual sewer billing submitted by, to the town of Goshen in connection with the sewer-provided services to Arcadia Hills and Hamiltonian Park. You can see in the agenda that the numbers for Hamiltonian Park is $112,834. And Arcadia Hills, it's $142,666. We've come up with those numbers, working with our, consistent with what we did in 2008 and '09, except it has the legal charges that were added to the bill that was passed in 2010.
You left the blank.
Well, that's why I just mentioned it. It's in your agenda. That's where, so we waited till the last minute because we were dealing with Mr. Brown on this. So, would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
No more.
Is there a second? Second is the discussion. Okay.
Can I just clarify the numbers?
Yes.
112834, Arcadia Hills.
Here's your, yeah, you got the agenda?
I have that.
Right there.
I'm sorry.
Hamiltonian Park is, Hamiltonian Park's $112,834. Arcadia Hills is $142,666. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
And legal charges, Dennis, what are those legal charges?
Trying to determine, yeah, that, I was going to make a comment on.
Yeah.
I have asked and requested a copy of all the pleadings and settlement, or stipulation settlement, which was entered into between the village and their contractor.
That's it.
On the plant. And as reported in the press, don't quote these exact numbers, but the village agreed to pay $50,007, but they had expended to date, and I guess it was still mounting, $240-some-thousand dollars in legal fees.
$234.
Okay. It's still mounting.
Oh, it's good. Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah. I, I, I.
But I'd like to say, in this, in for 2010, only $150,000 of it.
Was allocated.
Hit the cost sheet.
Right. Now, in that regard, again, and this may or may not be part of our ongoing arbitration, if you will, in the village, because I can't determine at this moment whether any of those legal fees or the basis of the suit is attributable to those areas which we find objectionable in the village.
Right.
So, as such, if the only fair way to do it is just Doug indicated using the same handle, and we will reserve the right to address that. I mean, if it's an offset or is a future claim or payment under protest or other things.
Well, the one thing I wanted to highlight is that it's not a legal fee that's as a result of the town and the village having litigation.
No.
It had nothing to do with the town. We have no decision-making process. We have no leverage. We cannot say yes or no.
Right.
They incurred these legal fees and now have passed the bill on to us, and it was the legal fees between them and the contract or whatever.
I understand.
So, it's clear that it's not.
Right.
Nothing that we incurred, but we're being asked to pay.
Right. It's analogous to, like anything else, the village is engaged in the operation of that plant. It's a cost of doing business, so it makes it, in theory, ostensibly legitimate, becomes a question upon examination, which we do. And they are passing along that portion of it attributable for the formula under the contract exactly.
From the tenant. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It's important the board understands.
Yeah. Well, it's a good question, why to broaden up, Phil. Any other discussion? Okay. Madam clerk, can we roll call vote on this one, please?
Supervisor Bloomfield.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Cantorino.
Aye.
Councilman Lurie.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I would just point out, procedurally, that money, so that check is normally transmitted by the budget officer, or is it already?
No, no, it'll be rid tomorrow morning and hand carried to the village.
Okay.
Yep.
It's important that I add a certain paragraph to that letter. Allo, me too, did this issue, the transmittal letter?
Look, we don't, please do it.
That's what I'm saying. I, I don't know who does.
No, we don't, we don't have a thing. We just write the check and carry it over.
Okay, no, if it's a letter, it has to go with that.
But we should have a transmittal letter.
In which?
And would explain that this is the portion we feel that we owe.
That's right.
In addition to that, blah, blah, blah.
The issue of the legal fees is an open, exactly.
Dennis, if you'll draft that letter, then we'll go first.
I just didn't know physically, see what I did.
Very good.
Very good.
Okay. The next one is, would someone like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of police officer Eric Harden, effective February 27th, 2011? So. Second? Any discussion? I'd like to say that we're sorry to see his, him go to the Woodtown or Woodbury Police Department, but I think he feels like he's got a better opportunity or what there, so I wish him well. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us down to the purchase of the new police car. Phil, do you want to talk about your discussion with the chief on this one?
Sure. And we went over the fact that this is a Crown Victoria. It's the last year, actually. It has to be completed by March 1st. That's when the bid process closes. It's on state bid. The reason they went with the Crown Victoria, we knew basically that there's a lot of equipment that they will be taking off, for instance, the cage and a lot of the equipment will be taken off the current Crown Victoria that's being traded in. And there was a question of the low amount of the invoice for this new vehicle being maybe $5,000 or $6,000 less than the last time we paid it, and that's why we're able to take the parts off of this. In addition to that, the gas mileage and there are situations with front-wheel drive of the vehicles that are on the police bid, the gas mileage is, they said, relatively the same. So, they felt economically, at this point, it was more prudent to purchase the Crown Victoria that's on state bid. Now, that being said, after a long discussion, it was agreed that we would start changing our fleet with next, the next viable purchase. We will go down into the six-cylinder, as long as it's on state bid, and just change our whole fleet to see if we can do it economically a little better. But they still felt very strongly that the Crown Victoria would be the right way to go in this particular bid.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we authorize the police chief to purchase the 2011 Ford Crown Victoria for the New York State bid at a cost not to exceed $24,718?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to vote yes on this tonight only because of the fact that it is probably $6,000 less than what the other Crown Victorians were purchased at. But I still feel that a six-cylinder definitely gets better gas mileage than an eight-cylinder. There's nobody that's going to tell me otherwise, especially when I talk to other police departments. So, I just wanted, I'm reluctantly saying yes, but I'm happy, Phil, that you said, based on your conversation, going forward, because this is the time to start making some changes.
Absolutely. And that's, the whole fleet will be changed into six-cylinders, as long as the six cylinders hold up and meet the specifications that we need. But at this point, we're going to six cylinders. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to run record savings. Lou, I said it Monday night, six cylinders away to go. No one's going to give us the elbow either. But also on the sidewalk for the future, unfortunately, I've become a much person. There's not much, I believe, I understand, to go into six.
I don't have a problem. Vote no.
Well, no, no, I have a problem.
I mean, I don't have a problem.
To say that the.
Tell the police chief no.
Also, it was suggested, we talked about cost, that the state police were trading lots, you ever chance to mention that, to the police chief at the state?
Yeah, we talked about that.
I don't know. I was saying, I want to talk about cost reduction. If the state police are going to turn cars over, they're not, they're not going to get our personnel in the end. I think it was Dennis, were you saying? Somebody suggested that we look into that, very cheaply look. That's no barrier on this one, but in the future, we should look at that one.
No, no, I'll comment on that. I mean, we covered a lot of areas. And I think to comment was 20,000 state police vehicles, or maybe the paper said 20,000. Someone mentioned it. Well, there are probably only 4,000 in the fleet, so I thought that was extreme, because we were talking about New York State. So, maybe the number instead of 20,000 is 2,000. So, I talked to the chief extensively. He was not aware of a wholesale program where they would, well, what it looks like is, and he's going to verify this, is it appears, and it hasn't been done yet, but what I think the governor is talking about is possibly taking those vehicles away that are in the management category, not the ranking file, not the state police cars, but the cars that the, you know, crisis managers and whoever the upper echelon in the police department use to respond to whatever, those particular, we would call them company cars, but those particular vehicles they're talking about possibly taking off the road and having, you know, just pay mileage for whatever, but not to have those company vehicles for all the higher-ups. That's what he thought. He will investigate it. If there's a possibility of us buying used cars, we will bid for them. There's no question about it. But he had indicated that that had not happened yet. That was only in the discussion. So, that's where we are on that. Okay? Is that, is that okay? If we ever want to?
George, you go.
Okay. No, I think the only thing that I would say, since anyone, everyone seems to be commenting on it, is that this is going to replace a vehicle that has, at least because I said this on what they made.
$245,000.
Well, that was, yeah.
$250,000.
Yeah. Okay. So, the last report I had, $245,000. So, I'll say it's replacing a 2004 Crown Beck, which has $250,000. So, we certainly got good news out of that 2004.
I think there's another $50,000 cash.
Well, he did say that they held up very well. Mechanically, it cost them a lot less. There were issues with front-wheel drives, and I know that for a fact also. So, I mean, you know, it's a balancing act. So, that's why they wanted to go to Crown Beck. But there's a lot of resistance. I think, I'll listen to it.
They dug up with the six-hundred power, they got me over $50,000.
It was a six-cylinder.
I say, Beck 300, don't go.
I think that the, one of the other items we need to make about this is this, is thinking of budgets. This is a purchase of cars that we forecast in the budget.
Actually, we're saving money because we probably forecast more.
We forecast $35,000.
$35,000. And this is 24.
$10,000 better than.
Yeah.
We'll take the six.
Okay.
Life is good.
Yes. I mean, life is good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. The next item is, we need to set a public hearing regarding local law one of 2011 pertaining to the use of a cash bond as security by subdivision applicants. Dennis, you want to kind of sort of?
I discussed Monday night, I'll make this brief. Our subdivision code presently provides basically for performance guarantee respective subdivisions. There's a performance bond posted, or performance guarantee, posted by the applicant subdivider, which presently is an alternative choice for it or him or she to post either certified funds into a spare account or an irrevocable letter of credit. There is some concern going forward because of the economy, because of the validity of letters of credit and offset provisions by banks, et cetera, that it might put us in a precarious position someday in regards to the validity in the collection, should we ever so needed. So, uh, the proposed local law basically changes that both in terms of the performance guarantee and the maintenance guarantee. As you know, after everything's dedicated, they usually post ten percent of the total cost for a one-year period to assure the integrity of those improvements. That'll also be converted, uh, to simply or solely a certified fund deposit as opposed to a choice of irrevocable letter of credit and/or cash. So that's what the proposed local law is. And, uh, it's the text you have in front of you, and you also have the notice of public hearing, uh, which is presently targeted for March 21, I believe.
The public hearing's for March 21?
Yeah, I believe. Uh, I'm sorry.
That's what it says.
Yeah, that's where, exactly. That's when the public hearing will be set. So you, you, the proper motion is to authorize the public hearing to be established with consideration of this local law pursuant to that notice of public hearing.
Someone like to make a motion in that regard?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second it and we'll have some discussion, uh, just, uh, to give you a little history. Uh, at one time, we only accepted cash bonds. There were no, uh, letters of credit, irrevocable letters of credit because they could be very risky instruments. If the bank fails, or if there's litigation, or if there's any reason, or the right of offset, or a number of things, the bank might not have to pay, and we would have to perform and do the things that weren't done that this bond might secure in order to finish up the infrastructure, subdivision, whatever, and we would have to use taxpayer money. If we have the cash bond, then it's pretty simple. We just pay it out of the cash bond. So, but, but at one time, that's the only thing that there was, was a cash bond.
Okay. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah, just clarification.
Right.
I just have to move in on that. Uh, I make a motion.
Phil?
I second it.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Counsel, supervisor Volkill.
Aye.
Counsel, Lee Newbold.
Aye.
Counsel, Rita Fowler.
Aye.
Counsel, Lynn Lyons.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I make Val, you'll take care of the publication.
You know, in that regard, Ken, who co-chairs the water sewer position with me, on Monday, just for the people who might not have been here, we, uh, we set a public hearing for March 10th at seven thirty, or soon thereafter, here in Town Hall, William Wood Webster Avenue, to, uh, discuss expanding the Hamiltonian Park water sewer districts to include the subdivision heritage states, AKA, what, AKA, what's the new name?
Something Farm?
I think it's New York Farms.
I believe it is. They're New York.
New York Farms, I think. So anyway, we're gonna have that public hearing on, uh, March 10th. Okay, the, uh...
You know, did you just have to comment on that because I missed that portion of the meeting Monday night? What'd you make? Val knows. I'll give it to you. Yeah. Val knows. The legal publication on that will take place in the time shown record.
Yes, I already did it.
No problem. I also think that we probably should make every effort for.
Writing letters and.
I was just saying, I didn't know if you had explained on that. Not required, but I think it's recommended.
My concerns is we're gonna wait and put those letters in the mail on Monday is we're setting everything in motion, and on the 7th, we've got to finish this contract.
They're, they're, they're aware of that. That is the intention. On the 7th, wrap up the contract, the 10th, the public hearing. And as you know, we can always extend the public hearing or continue it in the event we need to.
Well, except, I mean, if you're gonna be here, I wanna make sure that we've got something to explain to them.
Right, but the point there means it's procedural. I'm sure you know, on March 10th, if we're not prepared, you open the public hearing and we're continuing. Not to do that, I'm just saying.
I think you got two of them.
Yeah, no, one was.
But my, my, my concern is though, is it's very important to finish it because we'll have this place full of people expecting something else that will be continued for the next five years. Okay. All righty. Thank you very much. Uh, motion carries. The next one is we have a resolution regarding the, uh, it's called authorize a supervisor town negotiator to sign agreement with, uh, with Wright Risk Management Company to perform workers' compensation claims runoff management services for the town negotiation for the period January 1st, 2011 to December 31st, 2011. Uh, this is, uh, for all the Theo claims that they've been managing for us, and I think they're doing a good job. But anyway, we've got a contract we need to sign with them. Would someone like to make a motion in that regard?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Is, is the fee the same? That's my question.
Was it, was it, was it last year was, uh, five hundred bucks too, or don't you?
Five hundred dollars a claim? Right in here.
Yeah.
So it was the same as last year?
Same as last year. Only we have fewer claims we close, though.
Right.
Right. Okay, great question. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Greenfield.
Aye.
Counsel, Rita Fowler.
Aye.
Counsel, Lynn Lyons.
Aye.
Counsel, Catherine O'Neil.
Aye.
Counsel, Lee Newbold.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. I think one of these two is, Dennis, you put me on the side.
Yeah.
I think it's only with Louis.
I turned my office on.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, I've got here funny, so I'd rather the buzzer pay. I'm fine, I don't have anything. I, I got mine this afternoon, so once.
Oh, six years early, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion that we authorize a supervisor to pay accounts payable check run, uh, on, uh, 2/24/2011 amounting to three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents?
I'll move.
Stand a second. Any discussion? All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're now open for blue to the floor and any, anybody who'd like to talk about it.
Doug. Board, did Officer Eric Harden come to us as a certified police officer, or did we have to sponsor him?
I think he was certified when he came, but I couldn't verify that right now. He's been with us about five years.
I don't know if we have anything in the structure here. I know Walchill sponsored quite a few cops. They go to the academies, and in less than a year, they move on. But they also had some legislation there that that officer, officers will have to.
Pay it back.
As you leave in a sudden period.
Right.
Right. Right.
He's been here five years, and he was certified when he came.
Now.
We haven't sent him back to school at all, all the time.
We are also entering into this sewer hookup or whatever with Heritage, Heritage Estates slash New York Farms.
Right.
Recently, I saw in a newspaper, they had not paid their taxes. I think that would be something to look into prior to the town board entering into anything.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
What, what, which, which paper was that in?
You know, when the time shown record puts out the whole list of people that don't pay.
Right.
I saw New York Farms in there, and I was trying to think, who the hell's New York Farms?
Right.
And then I came to find out it was Heritage.
Okay. Good. Try to die.
No, just concerned citizen.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much for that.
But they own a number of pieces of property. That's a good, that's a number for us to find out if it's one of those sort of.
Well, the county, the county also has entered into, I'll leave the name blank, uh, with certain individuals that had a lot of financial problems, but the county still went with it. So it doesn't pay it. Pays to do your homework.
Yes. Any other?
Mr. Knoball was what I'm talking about.
I wouldn't know what you're talking about.
Well, you sat right alongside of me.
And, and the other, uh, any other comments from the public? Yes, Neil?
Well, uh, on Monday night, Bill was, uh, talking about all of the fees and surcharges associated with the bank accounts with the commercial banks that the town is doing business with, with, and I've said this before, I think I said it last year, if not the year before, um, why not do business with the Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union?
We do, uh...
I mean, I understand they don't have a branch right here in town.
Right.
But I could imagine that the town would probably save a degree of, uh, revenue doing business with them, a non-commercial bank. I mean, they're not, they're not really a bank, actually. The, uh, credit union is not for profit. And I know that, I think Bill said that he called them up or something, and there was some kind of communication, a cross of communication, and it just never worked out. But according to their, uh, bylaws, they're not allowed to go out and market their product to you. So it's up to the individual to go to them and just go and ask, you know, what, what can you do for us? What, you know? And the other thing is, I just hate to see the town doing business with the same commercial entities that are foreclosing on town and village residents and, uh, you know, everybody across the country because they mismanage their, you know, their affairs. I just, I, I, I just, in my mind, it's a conflict of interest. So I would hope that the town would at least consider it. As John Higgins says, take it under consideration.
Well, there's a couple of.
There's a lot of things, too.
That, that we would have to look at because they're not a chartered bank, they're not a commercial bank. I don't know if they're FDIC insured.
As far as I know, they are.
They are a private organization, and you have to be a union member to belong to them. It's a federal credit union.
I'm not a union member.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah.
They get around that. It's like Sam's Club. You have to have a business to get in, but you see everybody in there. But there are certain guarantees that banks, uh, must adhere to, certain financial structures that federal credit unions, state credit unions, and I know this because when I was in with General Motors, they were a prime competitor, only they did not have to abide by the same, uh, rules and regulate, banking rules and regulations that we did. Now, that being said, it's worth investigating, not a prob, not a question, absolutely. But I will just tell you, the charters are miles apart, and the security is, is, of the monies deposited and so on, uh, is, you know, miles apart. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, you know, Phil seems to know a good deal, and he, he knows money. And I'll let him talk to.
You know, you open your mouth, you take ownership.
No, 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 no. Well, you're a commissioner of finance.
I got it.
You know, but I, I, I don't know money, like, in that regard.
I don't know about no money, you know the questions to ask.
I, I will do that. But I think that.
I can take ownership.
Take your dog for walks, bro. You just got him.
Thank you. I think that if he exists, that would bill in five minutes, I get to the bottom of that one. Okay. Any other, uh, questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take some of your time. I just get away from my microphone.
Don't feel obligated over there. Hey, it wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't ask questions, right? You might feel bad. On, on what can I just mention about Heritage? Um, did I understand by the question that you have worked out your issues with them relative to their, uh, transiting across, uh, town jurisdiction to hook up with the village?
We, we have been, we're well along in the process.
I know you've been talking.
And we have to finish that process on the 7th of March because we're gonna review with the people in Hamiltonian Park and other interested parties on the 10th of March. That's where we're at. It's almost done.
Right. I, I thought that Jerry was implying that it had been resolved.
No, he was talking about.
I was talking about the tax situation.
No, I understand, but I thought in, in introducing that, that you had said that he didn't, it had been resolved.
No, I never broke that.
No, he didn't. That's why I asked questions.
Right.
Um, with regard to the conveyance of monies to the village for 2010 sewer charges.
Right.
Um, I was not giving a hundred percent of my attention when you launched into that, so I'm not sure I understand, uh, what you were putting forward about the allocation of those monies. The numbers that are on the agenda that are to be conveyed tomorrow to them.
Right.
Are the monies that they have told you you owe them?
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
No. They're two different numbers. This number is consistent with the methodology that we used in 2008 and 2009 with one exception. In 2010, they incurred legal fees.
Yes.
Which we don't have the great detail on.
Right.
Which is completely shared with us, and even though we're paying our share, but they, that could be a point of contention going forward.
So in other words, that number constitutes the formula that you used for the 2008 and nine payments.
Right.
Applied to the 2010 billing.
Right.
So you are giving them an adjusted amount on what they bill you.
Right.
Okay. Uh, with regard to the, uh, legal fees, uh, as you know, uh, they had outside counsel defending, uh, a suit by Carlin which was settled for, I believe, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, but a very substantial legal bill. The cause of that action was twofold. One, the cleaning out of the, uh, old dirt digesters and the stoppage that occurred because of the excavation. Um, I would, you know, it goes, in my mind, it goes directly back to the issue of that stockpile which has been, you know, in my craw for years, and I would hope that you wouldn't have let that drop. That issue.
Well, I mean, this is the, this is part of the arbitration process. We'll see.
That follow-on question I asked, uh, the last board meeting, uh, the same question I asked you at the last regular town meeting, what can you tell us about the status of the arbitration process?
It should begin in early March, when we have target dates, which remains in logistics. They don't know it. It should start probably the second week of March.
Can you talk about the availability of access to the public?
Yeah, as of, as of now, there will be no access. As of presently.
Now, you're talking. We noticed radio activity.
Now, I'm sorry. Uh, presently, the arbitrator, uh, has determined that based on the availability of the witnesses, of the projected witnesses, uh, the case is, it's gonna go in and be defended, uh, we're, we're gonna be operating out of a facility area in the county building made available to us by the county executive, and it's gonna be limited, uh, space, and at the present time, it's his intention, uh, probably ruling would be issued, that no public attends. It'll be a closed arbitration, and, uh, we're working out the details and the rules at the present time.
Okay. Thank you.
I would have been surprised if whoever was.
Yeah, it's a difficult issue, and I, and, um, John Cameron, who's the arbitrator, feels that, uh, it's the best interest of everyone, the community and the litigants, if you want to call them litigants, or the arbitrary parties, that, so as not to muddy the waters or incur undue criticism amid or publicity, uh, or misinformation, that'll be held in that manner.
Good. Thank you.
And the last question is, uh, at the, uh, film event for the Star Wars, with, with the Star Wars characters, will the supervisor be going as Yoda Darth Vader or Princess Leia?
I can recount it.
We're gonna go with Jarvis Darth Vader.
Go ahead, fuck off.
Are you familiar with the trilogy?
No.
Okay. Well, there we go. There we are. You have to TV to sue you.
Go with the Ewok, you and I.
Hey, uh, my TV is, uh, hooked up.
You can put your mic on, you're the supervisor.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Any other question? Oh, okay, Jerry?
Dennis, John Cameron, is this the same John Cameron that was the law clerk for Judge Elaine Slowbod?
Yes. Yes.
He's still in that position?
No, uh, he's been a longtime law secretary clerk, if you want, for any number of judges, going back to Ed O'Gorman, and, uh, he's retired now.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, he was available, and in fact, just for public consumption, John is a really, uh, distinguished attorney, and in terms of the colloquy we engaged in with the Supreme up, it was pretty much a consensus that if we were going to go with one arbitrator, he would be without question top of the list. So, we feel very fortunate. He's a really thoughtful resident, knowledgeable, and my goodness, I would throw out a number, I've got to believe he clerked for close to 40 years. Long, long time.
Yeah. He's a nice man.
A real gentleman.
I thought business was definitely an issue.
Yeah. Attorney's attorney, a real gentleman.
When you say we, was that shared by the other side as well?
Yeah. In fact, we were, as the, well, you're probably aware, we were interested in having more than one arbitrator in certain specialties, engineering, finance, that type of thing. The village had different theories, and as it was whittled down, based on discussions and whatnot, names were proposed, his name came up, and it became a realization to everyone, including Justice Slowbod, who actually made the order, that if he was available, that we couldn't do any better. And once it was confirmed he was available, he was pretty much a given choice. He's a real, very fair, very learned, decent man.
But we were looking for a panel.
Absolutely. Town was looking for a panel.
Judge Slowbod.
As Judge Slowbod said, you get one judge. If you're in litigation, why should you get more if you're doing arbitration?
Jerry, we like you.
Pardon?
But we like you.
You don't want me. I do have another question.
Yes. See, and... Oh, yeah, John Cameron.
My other question is this, Heritage Estates slash New York Farms.
Right.
I originally understood they were going to run their, run their sewer system down Old Chester.
Right.
But now, they're going to hook into supposedly the Arcadia Hamiltonian Park system.
Hamiltonian Park.
Okay. How does that enhance Hamiltonian Park with all their problems with the infrastructure?
You'll need to come to our public hearing, hear what the contract is and how it works.
Okay.
And what our... Otherwise, I'd tell you more than I know.
Other than you can come in, so I should say, there's both engineering and business judgment, common sense, there's a great deal of benefit to the residents in Hamiltonian Park.
That's where I was going.
By the inclusion of this development.
Right.
It's all, it's pretty much all upside.
Including broadening the base for anything that happens in that division. You broaden the base, so the cost is spread over a lot more houses for whatever repairs to the whole district.
Is there, are there any available large plots of land that if another developer wants to come in, I believe, isn't there in the back of Hamiltonian Park?
Yes.
Is there some of it?
McDermott.
McDermott. Now, does he have the right to hook into that system? Because it's existing?
He's part of Hamiltonian there.
Oh, okay. So, but other than that, it doesn't appear that there's any other large plots of land?
There could be. They look at that in the future, Maplewood to any number, even down the road, Riga Homes, down Craigville.
It's really a...
I think the theory, the theory of the board is that philosophically, we should look at enlarged self-sustaining districts as opposed to these satellites, these little pockets all over town, the counties scale so much.
If they run Riga down, Craigville Road, it goes by me.
Okay.
Do I have the right, if I want to pay, to be hooked into that system?
Depending upon how it's drawn.
Or the district.
Yeah. Potentially.
Or the district.
It wouldn't have to be forced to, but it could be involuntary.
Right. Right. Because I think there's a gentleman that just did that on Craigville Road. He hooked up.
Wouldn't be surprised.
It's really part of the district.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the supervisor was saying, if you come to the public hearing, it'd be very enlightening to everyone in the community as to what they think it is.
Well, you hear all these things.
Yeah.
Other than the county scale.
Does your information be available before the public hearing?
Uh, it'd be finalized if we finalize it in the 7th, but I'm not so sure we're going to want to...
Pre-judge it.
I mean, you have to have knowledge of it to speak about it. But we're going to speak out with the public hearing.
Well, you are, but I'm saying the people who come, usually they have the documents available, like in the library or the...
Well, this is going to be...
Again, just so you're aware, the petition itself to expand the district is founded upon engineering studies, maps, et cetera, which Heritage has done with regards to its development. And the premise is that that development is going to be added into Hamiltonian Park's district. So, by being familiar with Hamiltonian Park's district and viewing what's on file in the clerk's office, you can obtain, Gary, exactly what you're interested in, information-wise, anyone.
There's a lot of things that Dennis is going to say, not because he's got a document, because of his knowledge of what the benefits are. So, those, those things are going to be his notes and so forth. That's what I'm saying.
Who's that?
That's the...
Who's going to probably be making, I would say, for the most...
Well, and I think, I think it should be pointed out, too, though, that the board's favor, as you follow, how this all was determined, was Heritage New York Farms petition to create a separate warden sewer district, a small satellite district, which would stand on its own, just like Hamiltonian Park, just like Arcadia Hills. And the board's philosophy was that it would make a great deal more sense to integrate them into an existing system for many reasons, all of which will be set forth in the public hearing. And that becomes a question of getting a public tip. But again, I think, again, in fairness, they deserve credit for philosophically coming to that conclusion, as opposed to being faced with this growing number or series of separate distinct little districts out there.
I have reviewed with many of the people who've come by my office, one-on-one, who live in Hamiltonian Park, who've asked what's going on without giving specifics, and I've gotten very good response from all of them, to the person. So, I think it's going to be something that will be well-received, that's certainly the intent, because if they don't want it, it may not happen, you know? So, but I think there's certainly a financial benefit for them to do it, and also to New York haters, New York Water Farms.
But we're talking about existing. Are we talking about the village sewer system taking all of this in?
Yes.
Yes.
They take Hamiltonian in now, so they would hook up to Hamiltonian now, that would be a big...
It's a no-brainer for them, it's money.
Right. Exactly.
The village has, the village has a separate contract that they're working on with Heritage State.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway, I prefer not to get into a bottle tonight, because you'll hear the whole, whole thing, and that's the people who live out there.
One more question on the basic level, without going into a lot of detail.
Okay.
You're basically taking a new development and tying it into infrastructure that's over 50 years old.
Yeah, listen, don't go there. I mean, you're going to get in that kind of detail that everybody needs to...
No, my question was simply, if there's an issue with the old infrastructure not being able to carry or breaking down because of the new vote, who's going to...
No, 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 no. We've got, come on March 10, and we'll go through all of these things, otherwise...
But just answer, I mean, actually, you can tie it to, it's one sewer district. The cost for any repair for that whole sewer district will go to the whole district. That was my question. The base is...
Well, I thought your question was, well, who are you going to pay for if there breaks the consequences of these people moving in?
Right. You're going to go to the developer or go to the district?
No.
Just one district is established.
Right. Okay.
I don't want to go into detail.
Okay. But anyway, come on 10, and we'll have cookies in camp. All right. Would someone like to make a motion that we go into executive session with the intent not to return, to discuss the updated status of personnel case arbitration, and also the can-solve in litigation?
No move. And taxers.
Taxes.
Okay. And taxers, very updated.
There's some other things.
Okay.
Phil mentioned, Phil, he did mention...
The police.
It should be.
Well, no, you just mentioned one to talk about, so, and some police, whatever it is.
All the personnel issues that I went and took ownership of.
And one other, too, just in case, of course, I want to cover, village sewer arbitration again. That's not out yet. Right? So, we're covered.
Okay.
I saw we got one.
I'll second that. Okay. Any discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks, for coming.
If you can't catch up to me, just give him the move, the nominal. All right?
Oh, yeah, okay. I heard O'Donnell told you to take it out.
Who told you that? Please, there's so many of you, you know me.